Welcome to the October 8, 2025 meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. Let the record reflect that all council members are in attendance. We will begin this meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Wells, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome our new city clerk, Tori Frank. Tori, welcome. We know that you'll enjoy it here. It might be a little confusing. We have two Tories. So we'll just make sure which one you're referring to. Please silence any and all electronic devices. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the council chamber. The city of Greensboro strongly encourages resident input at our meetings. It is the goal of the city council that the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber is a welcoming and safe space for all community members. In order to speak at tonight's meeting, individuals must sign up to speak by 6:00 P.M. If you have signed up to speak online, you must let the courier know that you are in attendance. Speakers may address specific consent or business agenda items with three minutes allocated for their remarks. Speakers cannot relinquish their time to others, and the speaker's order is determined by the presiding officer. Depending on the number of speakers, council may adjust the time allocated for each person. Any handouts must be given to the courier for distribution. All speakers are expected to adhere to the rules of decorum. Any inappropriate or disruptive behavior will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Removal will result in a three-month suspension from in-person participation. A second violation following the initial suspension will result in a six-month suspension. A third violation or any instance involving physical altercations will lead to a 12-month suspension and may also result in criminal charges. Zoom participants shall not speak until they are called upon. By state statute, members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they serve on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the presiding officer will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda for items G1 through G13, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what is believed to be a routine and non-controversial item. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the next business meeting agenda. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we will take a short recess around 7:30. Now is the time for our ceremonial and presentation items. Item E1 is a resolution of the city of Greensboro affirming environmental protection and expressing concerns regarding the Transco pipeline expansion. Mrs. Boozerweider will read it. We do have two speakers who will speak before we vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the proposed Transco Southeast Supply Enhancement Project will impact communities in and around Greensboro, and whereas this pipeline expansion project raises a range of concerns for residents, including but not limited to public safety risks, potential impacts on water resources, environmental degradation, increased utility costs, and broader economic risks. And whereas the city of Greensboro recognizes the importance of protecting public health, natural resources, and the community's quality of life. And whereas in December 2022, the city of Greensboro adopted a strategic energy plan with the overall goal of achieving 100% renewable energy by 2040. And whereas in 2020, the city of Greensboro received a Silver LEED designation from the United States Green Building Council, USGBC, in recognition of its sustainability efforts. LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, is the world's most widely-used green building rating system and promotes strategies to reduce environmental harm, enhance human health, and support economic development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Greensboro City Council urges the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, to fully and transparently consider the health, safety, environmental, and quality of life concerns raised by Guilford County residents and other affected stakeholders. Require a comprehensive environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act that evaluates all potential risks and alternatives to the proposed pipeline expansion. And ensure that impacted communities are consulted and that their input is meaningfully reflected in any final determinations regarding the project's approval, route, and regulatory conditions. And require the Williams Companies to provide immediate notification of emergency events to affected residents and local emergency management agencies. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, the North Carolina Utilities Commission, Guilford County, and the members of Greensboro's federal legislative delegation. Adopted this the eighth day of October 2025. I would like to make that motion, Madam Mayor.
And we do have two speakers, Margaret Rowlett and Aiden Loretz.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and Mayor Pro Tem Boozerweider and council members. My name is Margaret Rowlett, and I would like to start by... I'd like to start by thanking you so much for your service to the city. Y'all are a great city council. You listen to your constituents. You take the time to meet with your constituents, and we really appreciate that. I rise to speak in favor of the resolution that was just read and ask you, I hope you'll pass it unanimously. I know this has been a busy time of the year for you, and you have many pressing concerns. So I really appreciate your taking the time to create this resolution, work through the issues around it, and put this forward. You know, we appreciate your listening and taking our concerns seriously. You have an impressive history of support for sustainability, conservation, clean energy, and we're glad to see that continuing. Mayor Vaughn, Dr. Wells, and Councilmember Hoffman, we know you didn't put your hats in the ring to continue serving by running again. But we're so happy that this is the way that you're concluding your support for sustainability with all your efforts here. And it's been very valuable to have your support through the years on this. And to have Mayor Vaughn, all the experience you've brought over the years around the things you've learned as mayor and that you were able to help us work through on this. And this resolution has really important points in it with you reaffirming your commitment to your renewable energy goal and strategic energy and having the concerns of Guilford County and Greensboro residents considered, including things around the risks of this pipeline that is very negative when it comes to thinking about clean energy for our area. It's not consistent with our goals. So we very much appreciate you passing this resolution unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, City Council. My name is Aiden Loretz. I've chatted with a lot of you here and also individually. And I just want to say a really big thank you, Mayor Vaughn. Thank you to the whole council. But I echo what Margaret shared. Councilmember Hoffman, Dr. Wells, and Mayor Vaughn, you've secured your climate legacy. This is going to be a part of how you all are remembered by the people in Greensboro. So thank you so much. Thank you also, you know, council members Vaughn, Hoffman, Holston, Thurm, and Pinder, and of course, our mayor, Pro Tem, our current mayor, Pro Tem, for conversations that we had leading up to this resolution coming. We'll be directing public members of our coalition to send notes of appreciation to all of you because there are hundreds of people in Greensboro and thousands across Guilford County that are grateful for you all adding your voice. The environmental justice scene in Greensboro looks forward to working with the council members who will be on the incoming council to take more stands for our environment and public health. And to share a little bit of my personal story with you all, in the past 18 months, I graduated with the highest academic honors from U N C G with a degree in sociology and a minor in communication studies. And I've chosen to continue to reside in Greensboro. I love the city and the people here and the people across Guilford County. And I'm honored to have been awarded the Governor's Volunteer Service Award for environmental stewardship in Guilford County just the other week. This victory here is a testament to the power of the people. I'm honored to be an emerging leader in a city with community that has such a fierce sense of social and environmental justice. This resolution joins others of a similar nature in prioritizing communities and people over pipelines and profit. And I do have some stickers for y'all, which I will share with Councilmember Hightower, and hopefully she can pass them down all the way to Councilmember Pinder.
Actually, if you would give them to the clerk, they'll...
Yes, absolutely. I'll give them to the clerk. But thank you all so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. So that was moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council, please vote. And that does pass unanimously, nine to zero. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I do want to thank you for your positivity through the word crafting and all of the things we've done over the last week. And I appreciate everyone's assistance on that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We now move on to item E2, which is a resolution honoring the late pastor Nancy Wilson. And we do have speakers signed up to speak on this. Mrs. Hightower?
Can you hear me? Can you? He's working. He's working. Sharon, are you starting or am I starting? Where are we?
I'll start.
Okay.
Resolution honoring the life and legacy of Pastor Nancy Wilson. Whereas on July 14, 2022, Greensboro lost a devoted member of our community with the passing of Pastor Nancy Wilson. Whereas Pastor Wilson was born on August 14, 1948, in Greensboro, North Carolina, and from an early age displayed a profound love of music, faith, and fellowship. Whereas she graduated from James B. Dudley Senior High School in 1966, and soon thereafter began to pursue her calling to ministry. Whereas Pastor Wilson cultivated her gifts as a preacher, psalmist, pianist, and choir director, she became widely known for her exceptional musical ability and devotion to guiding others in worship and ministry. Whereas she served faithfully as minister of music in congregations across North Carolina, including Trinity AME Zion, St. Matthew's United Methodist, Grace Lutheran, First Baptist Church of High Point, Wells Memorial, and Evangel Fellowship Church of God in Christ. She lifted worship to new heights and strengthened the spiritual life of the community. Whereas she graced the stage of Gospel Expo with heartfelt performances, delivered gospel melodies that uplifted spirits, inspired faith, and touched the hearts and soul of all who heard her.
Whereas she dedicated time to educate and provide mentorship, co-directed the Bennett College Gospel Choir, served as minister of music for the Greater North Carolina Jurisdiction of the Church of God in Christ, and founded the Nancy Wilson Concert Choir. Through these efforts, she inspired and prepared countless students and young ministers to pursue excellence in music and ministry. Whereas in 1993, Pastor Wilson founded New Beginnings Community Outreach Church in Greensboro, a ministry dedicated to prayer, holiness, and service. Under her leadership, the church not only nurtured spiritual growth, but met the tangible needs through outreach, creating a sanctuary of hope and empowerment for the wider community. Whereas Pastor Wilson expanded her reach as a national recording artist and radio personality, her acclaimed projects Nancy Currie and Designed for Worship both reflected her heart as a worship leader and established her as a voice of faith whose influence led far beyond the sanctuary. She was one of Greensboro's most influential women recipients of the Women of Distinction Award, Greensboro Chapter of NAACP. Whereas her work extended into hospitals and community programs, she offered encouragement, healing, and faith to people in every walk of life. She stood as both a spiritual leader and a cultural ambassador of gospel tradition. Whereas Pastor Nancy Wilson's life demonstrated the transformative power of worship, education, and service. And her legacy continues to uplift Greensboro and inspire generations of leaders, musicians, and worshippers across North Carolina and beyond. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that Pastor Nancy Wilson is recognized and honored for her extraordinary achievements as a minister, musician, educator, and community servant. That in recognition of her significant contributions to the city of Greensboro, appropriate signage shall be installed to honor her legacy. That a copy of this resolution shall be presented as a lasting token of gratitude to her family for the service Pastor Nancy Wilson rendered to Greensboro and to the gospel community at large. Move the resolution.
Okay, so that has been moved and seconded. Council, please vote. And we do have Angela Currie, Isaac Currie, and Bishop Brian Pierce.
Right, but we do have, I think, her husband is here in person. So we would hear from him, and I'd like to present him the resolution. And then the three... As he's coming, I just want to say, when I first moved to Greensboro, she was a person I saw on the TV singing with Bishop Middlebrooks. So years ago, African-American singer on the Fox channel years ago. But it was very inspiring. So that's my first recollection of her and continue to hear from her as well throughout the years.
I just want to say thank you so much for the out of this vote. I can't talk about my wife without crying. But I want to say thank you so much for this. God bless you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the three speakers on Zoom, two of them are her children. Obviously, we know Bishop Brian Pierce. But her son, Isaac Currie, for those of you who follow gospel music, is a national gospel recording artist that has sang with people from John P. Key to Kirk Franklin as well. So I think he started out with Brian Pierce's gospel group years ago. So we have a lot of talent that comes out of this city. And so it's great to have him here as we recognize his mother, who set the standard of excellence.
So are the other... Do we have somebody on Zoom? We do? Okay. Ms. Currie, if you would like to make a few comments?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and the Greensboro City Council members. On behalf of my family, I want to thank you for this incredible honor of commemorating my mother, Pastor Nancy Currie Wilson. While her music reached far and touched many lives in many places, there was no place she loved more than Greensboro, the city she called home for 73 years. She was a giant in the spirit who was designed for worship. Whatever is done in the church affects the entire community. And if done correctly, as I believe my mom did, it blesses and creates a positive impact in the lives of many. She served faithfully, and her ministry of song, prayer, and encouragement lifted countless neighbors, friends, and families right there in the city of Greensboro. If... I'm sorry. Thank you so much for recognizing her life and her legacy in this special way. We are humbled. God bless you and the city of Greensboro.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker on Zoom? Mr. Currie?
How you doing? Hello to all, to the city council. Thank you so much for this honor. We're so humble. We're so grateful. I can't say any more than what's been said about my sister Angela and my stepfather. And we're so grateful. It's a humbling experience to know that someone has given their life, not just to God, but to a great city that she loved more than anything. And then the city then returns that love later on, even when her life is over, that her kids and her husband can experience and cherish forever. It's a huge, huge, huge honor. So we thank all of you, and we bid you Godspeed. God bless you.
Thank you. Is Bishop Pierce in the room or on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to...
Yeah, let us just pull your picture up.
There we go.
There you go. Yep.
All right. Well, greetings to each and every one of you, to Mayor Vaughn, and to Mayor Pro Tem, and to, of course, our District One Leader, Sharon Hightower, and all of the city council members. Thank you for this great honor again to be able to just honor the life and legacy of the late, great Pastor Nancy Wilson. What a joy it is, her impact, the impact of her life and her legacy. It's not only felt locally, but nationally. Personally, nearly 30 years ago, I wasn't a pastor. I wasn't a leader in the community, but just a resident. And she had such an impact upon me and my wife and my family, one of the first pastors that we came to know in the city. And then, of course, ministerially, we were able to see her minister to so many, the least the left out and the lonely, right there in the community. And so such a great joy it is to see this day and to see this moment come about where the city is able to honor such a great, great, great gift. So again, thank you, guys. And of course, just as the family has stated, we all are appreciative for this great honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to item E3, which is a resolution declaring the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm our dedication to creating a culture of safety and hope in our community where no one suffers the hurt and hardship caused by domestic violence, and recommit to doing everything in our power to uphold the basic human right to live free from violence and abuse and recognize our shared responsibility in ending this pervasive problem. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, and is rooted in a pattern of power and control. Whereas physical marks and scars are often the most obvious sign of harm, however, the extent of the pain goes much deeper and can impact one's mental, physical, and financial health. Whereas the Guilford County Family Justice Center, FJC, is a beacon of light coordinating essential services including advocacy, law enforcement, and social, medical, and legal services. Whereas vulnerable children and older adults are impacted at higher levels, and it is essential that we participate and support innovative collaborations like the FJC's Pathways and Camp Hope Program for Children and the FJC's Elder Justice Abuse Committee, coordinated with community response. Whereas in a community partnership, the FJC has successfully brought together 17 agencies in one place to provide victims with easier access to comprehensive resources. This diverse and unique partnership provides hope and healing to victims of abuse and works diligently to hold offenders accountable. Whereas since the opening of the FJC on June 15, 2015, over 100,000 residents have been served. And on average, an individual works with five different organizations when visiting the FJC for the first time. Whereas by working together, getting involved, and through promoting awareness, we can restore hope, stop the violence, and make our community safer for everyone. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that it does hereby declare the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges residents to increase their awareness and education of this destructive force, which deeply affects many families in our state and local community each year, and to become part of the efforts to stop violence in families, adopted this the 8th day of October 2025. I would like to move that resolution. Madam Mayor?
Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Mrs. Sirm. Council, please vote. And I'm sure you have speakers here.
Yes, I do. And I would like Sonia Desai, the interim director, and anyone else who would like to stand behind her would be absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
And that passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Vaughn, Mayor Protem, Abusa Waiter, and the city council. If you know Family Justice Center, you know that we travel in packs. We never come alone. We're always together. But that is the power of a Family Justice Center. Thank you so much for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month and the good work of the Guilford County Family Justice Center. I'll be brief this evening. With me tonight, I bring law enforcement, attorneys, social workers, survivors, and Family Justice Center staff. Together, we bring a collective message to our community that everyone has the human right to be free of violence and abuse. At the FJC, it is our job to stand in the gap and be the voice for those who are voiceless. Oftentimes, it is the abuser who silences the victims. But never should it be society or the system that silences the victim. This is why we have a Family Justice Center, so that we can provide a voice. We are the hope givers. Whether it is a cop, a social worker, an advocate, or an attorney, working within this center, our most important job is to give hope. We are really proud of the past 10 years, the 100,000 survivors that we have served. Our commitment to the city of Greensboro and Guilford County is to continue to hold offenders accountable for these heinous crimes and to ensure that survivors are safe. We are committed to giving hope to our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sonia, I know that your office has suffered some fire damage. So where can people find you now?
We are now located in the Greensboro location of the courthouse location. We're on the bottom level, LG. It is a little difficult to find us, but you can call us. And if the courthouse may not be a great location for a survivor to come into, they are more than welcome to obtain services from our High Point location, which is located on the backside of the courthouse. But you don't have to go through the courthouse to get to it.
Thank you. Any idea when you're going to be back in your digs?
The verdict's not out on that yet, but soon enough.
Very good. Well, we hope it's soon. You guys do great work. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to mention, this is one of the, you know, hardest grouping, group of people I've ever met. And they make sure that any person coming in who needs assistance gets that assistance. And, you know, I've had the pleasure, you know, you put me on the executive committee many years ago, before it was even, even a reality. And, you know, just getting to know everyone in all of the different departments has really, really felt special to me. So thank you all so much.
And thank you. Thank you.
So now it's time for public comment. Speakers on from the floor on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity here from anybody wishing to speak. Generally, this is a time of listening for counsel. The subject will be noted, and if it requires after-action attention, we will be sure to get that information from our clerk. As I call your name, if you would come to the window side of the room, our first three speakers are Dave Coker, Shirley Samuel, and Lily Otis. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Dave Coker. I live and work in District Two. And while you know me as president of the Professional Firefighters of Greensboro, this evening, I feel really confident in saying that the vast majority of city employees, whatever department they're in, and their families will agree with my comments. The 7% increase in healthcare premiums, higher deductibles, and the new spousal penalty will have a serious negative financial impact on all employees, but especially those employees at the lower end of the pay scale. For many, these changes will feel less like a routine adjustment and more like a pay cut. Let me give you an example. Those general employees in, not firefighters, those general employees in SO 6 and SO 7 who have the Employee Plus Family Plan, who are also subject to the spousal penalty, appears will have a net take-home loss in 2026 related to these increases. That's the reality facing families who work in this organization. We understand the city faces complex budget pressures and that healthcare costs are rising everywhere. But fairness and timing matter. Employees were only notified about these significant changes on Monday, and now we're expected to make complex financial and healthcare decisions over a short two-week period. Many spouses who work elsewhere have already gone through open enrollment periods. Families have already made healthcare decisions for the next year. Those decisions made in good faith were based on city's existing rates. Now, after those deadlines have passed, families are being told that the same coverage will cost hundreds to thousands of dollars more. And that's before you get sick. And they'll be penalized simply for staying on the city plan. That's not a policy issue. That's a question of fairness, of planning, and poor communication. We respectfully ask council to maintain the 2025 healthcare rates at their current levels and remove the spousal penalty. Doing so will provide stability, allow families to plan responsibly, and show that Greensboro values the people who make this city work. Greensboro employees meet every challenge asked of them every day, 24/7/365, whether that's in a fire station, a patrol car, clearing roads after a storm, taking a 911 call, sitting behind a desk, or reading to kids in a library. Greensboro workers show up every day. Our hope is that the city can meet the moment with the same sense of commitment, fairness, and responsibility that Greensboro employees exhibit every time we come to work. Again, we ask you to direct the manager to maintain the 2025 healthcare rates at their current levels and to remove the spousal penalty. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, could we at some point get some, I know we have some information on this. And, you know, I want to make sure that it's not a burden on our employees as much. And I understand costs have gone up. I understand all that. But just can it be looked at to see?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Super. Anything?
Yeah. And also, have you actually met with the various departments? Because I called an actual worker that works in the field, and he didn't know anything about this. So personally, I saw the email that came over, but I'm not the one being affected. So there are our workers that are out there delivering services, trash, et cetera. And they are usually the lowest ones on the pay scale. And they don't need to be impacted by this. So you need to have individual meeting with these departments before this goes out and before it's done. So you just need to hold up before this moves forward.
Yes, ma'am. I think there's a form of communication that we can have. Each department has an HR rep for these scenarios, but I hear loud and clear what the council direction is.
If I could also add, excuse me. When did our employees get first, well, first of all, it's all city employees, correct?
Yes.
It's all city employees. And when did they first get notice of these changes or updates?
I believe first notice was included in the employee newsletter that went out last week. And then information's going out through the HR reps, setting up meetings over the next two-week period. And have some of those meetings, just as Councilor Hightower was referencing. We've got about 18 separate meetings scheduled. And of course, tomorrow is open enrollment at the Coliseum, which is where a lot of employees will have that first conversation.
Thank you. Going to the comment made by the speaker, and I'm trying to remember, in private enterprise, open enrollment is usually about the same time, a little bit earlier, for most other organizations. I'm thinking of the spousal surcharge. It is making that decision whether or not I stay with the city or my spouse goes to his or her own employer. Are most organizations doing their open enrollment right now?
Yes.
And so it would be in conjunction with. So it's really that one-week notice of the changes, and of course, the changes being increases, and then trying to coordinate that with cost and coverage. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know that I reached out to Assistant Manager Davis earlier about wanting to compare and contrast our coverage with the county's coverage so that I could see where some of the differences were. I received that information today, and there are some sizable differences in coverage. Not just one covers this medicine and one doesn't. So there are others, several sizable differences. I'd also be interested in taking a look at, as we're gathering information, what is the financial implication of this potential $100 spousal surcharge? And how much are we really impacting the city's budget by that versus the family budget? And I think that's information we need as well.
When we started looking at the last couple of years and how the health insurance fund has performed, the last two years, we've spent well more than we've taken in. And as y'all know, as I hope some of our employees know, we are self-funded. So we're our own company. We're our own insurance company. So we pay the bills based on what our employees, our retirees, and the general public pays. Last year, the year we completed in June 30, we spent $7 million more than we took in. We took in about $50 million. We spent about $57 million. That's not a sustainable health plan. You can do that for one year, but you can't do that on an ongoing basis. So as the, as the numbers were coming in for last year, and I was meeting with people in culture and finance and budget, I gave them sort of three directives. I said, you've got to come back with something that we can take to the employees in the fall. You got to do, it's got to do three things. Traditionally, our goal has been that all health insurance is covered 75% by the taxpayer, 25% by the employee or retiree. Now, it doesn't work out for every individual employee for that because of different kinds of coverages. But that's our overall goal. And I told them, I said, whatever you bring back has got to keep that in mind. We can't have that number changed dramatically. We can't suddenly go to being 50% taxpayer, 50% employee, retiree. It's got to stay in that sort of 75, 25. Second thing is, it's got to be impactful. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to overturn this many lives, it's got to be worth it. It's got to start to fix that $7 million gap. It's got to start moving us in the right direction. There's no point in creating a whole lot of turmoil that generates a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's got to be worth our time and effort to make these changes. So, and then, as they considered that, I said, finally, it's got to be competitive. You know, we can't simply put in a health plan and suddenly everybody leaves because they want to go work somewhere else because the health plan is somewhere, is better somewhere else. And then actually, I apologize, fourth, I said, this has got to be across the board. We're going to have to go up on rates, which everyone has to pay. Whether you go to the doctor or not, you have to pay your rates. But we know we've got some particular increases that are unique and kind of overwhelming right now. And we've got to start putting some of that cost back on those employees. And so a good example of that would be, and I know you know the names because they're on, you can't watch 30 minutes of TV without the ads, Ozempic and Wegovy, the weight reduction drugs. They are incredibly popular right now. We have over 900 employees or spouses on those drugs right now. We currently charge a co-pay of $50 a month for that drug. Our own health benefits administrators and consultants were like, you know, what are you doing? You know, you're spending millions of dollars out of your healthcare plan for that, and you're charging people $50 a month co-pay? You know, we've got clients, they have clients that charge 200, 250 a month. Well, we weren't going to that. But we did say, that's a particular use. We want people to use that drug. I mean, that ultimately leads to hopefully less healthcare costs in the future. We don't want people to stop using it. But it's not fair for the broad base of employees to be covering that cost. So we're going up $25. You know, we're going up to, you know, $75. So that was an example of where we tried to balance that burden. We tried to make it as fair as possible. So there wasn't just all 3,300 of us, you know, going up on rates. We could have done that. It would have been much more than 7%. The spousal surcharge, that has come up multiple years in the past, and we've turned it down every time. But we know now that spouses are where a large portion of our costs are actually occurring. And all we're saying, you can't be on the plan if you have a spouse. It's just if your spouse has another option and you choose to stay with us, then you have to start covering a little bit more of those costs than you're currently covering. So those were, those were the, those were the goals. We, this was not an effort to be punitive, you know, or arbitrary. That was the directive that I gave staff. And I feel like what they brought back met my directives. No way is it going to be popular. No way is it going to make people happy. But we can't have a $7 million operating deficit. And all the things we've talked about tonight, all the, all the items that you've heard, and Mr. Coker got them all correct and accurate, and I appreciate that. That's going to generate about $2 million of that $7 million. So we, that rest is going to have to come, and I've had individual conversations with a couple of you. That's going to come in next year's budget conversation. We're going to have to find the balance of that to keep our plan healthy and active and covering the things that it covers.
Just one follow-up question. At what, what's the stop loss? Does the city ensure a stop loss per individual and per year?
Yes. Anything over $350,000. Our stop loss pre, uh, 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 policy kicks in. So, yes.
Is there a maximum stop loss for the plan for the year?
I don't know. I don't think so. I do know that catastrophic cases, which in previous years, we had maybe three or four of those, we now have nine, 10, 11 a year. So we have multiple instances where we're going well past that. But we're maxing out at, you know, 350 over and over and over again.
Mr. Davis, how many employees fall into that spousal situation out of our total?
About a quarter. About a quarter of our employees carry a spouse. About, about one-fourth.
A quarter, 25%?
Carry, carry a spouse. Yes. So it's not, it's not a small number.
So have you looked at a tiered approach as opposed to just, so you're going to hit everybody with all these increases?
Well, again, it, the base rate does in fact hit everybody. Some of the co-pay increases are more tied to what kinds of services that you're particularly using. So again, that's why we didn't try to make everybody pick the entire cost up. If you're not making, if you're not using these services, then the 7%, that's your increase. your increase. If you are a employee-only-covered employee, which over half of our employee base is, covers only themselves, that's about two-seventy-five a paycheck, pay period, that yours is going up. So that's where, you know, that's where the bulk of that is occurring, but those, you know, people going to the emergency room, we're going up on that copay. And I'll acknowledge, that is not so much a revenue generator, as we hope it's a behavioral change agent. We've got too many employees using the emergency room as their primary care physician, and we want them to start developing a relationship with a doctor, and not the, and not the ER.
So what would be an incentive for that to occur?
We're gonna charge you more when you go to the ER.
That's not necessarily an incentive.
We think it is. We honestly believe it is.
Yes, it's a little concerning, though, that you are raising prices on people on short notice. I mean, the worker I talked to today, he's building a house, so if his premiums go up, that changes his income, that affects his mortgage even. Those kinds of things are drastic measures, so I think notice would have really, more notice would have been helpful. My final question to you is, since you say we're self-employed, but we're self-employed and self-paid insured through United Healthcare?
No, United Healthcare is our plan administrator. They manage to pay for it, of course, but we, we pay the bills.
So regardless of who our plan administrator would be, because I know a couple of years ago, you got a whole lot of significant pushback from some of our fellow council members, but you went to another plan administrator, who said they were gonna save us one to one-point-five million.
Well, we, we proposed that.
Right, we did.
Council ultimately stayed with our current plan.
Yeah, I remember.
Dr. Wells, Mr. Holston, and Ms. Pender.
Did you look at what the most would be for an individual? What would be the increase, the highest increase for any individual? Did you look at that?
Yes, yeah, we-
What is it?
It's like seventeen hundred dollars total. If you, if you are family-covered, and you, and you stay with, you know, you decide, you keep the spousal surcharge, and you, and you're in what we call Choice Plus, which is our higher-rated plan.
That's thirteen, seventeen more than what they're paying now.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's significant.
Mr. Holston, Ms. Pender, Mr. Matheny, and me.
All right. Mr. Davis, question for you. I think earlier you said that, that the total deficit per year was about seven million dollars. Is that per year, or is that over time?
The last couple of years, yes.
And with these changes, there would be a two-million-dollar benefit, so to speak, or a contrast, so still we're five million short. And piggybacking off of Councilwoman Thurms' question regarding the cost, is there a, is there an analysis of how much each of these pieces, these, for the deductible increase, the spousal surcharge?
Yes, we can share that with you.
Okay, and I would like to see that, to see what the, what the process was.
Sure.
And also, again, I guess to answer the question, this is per fiscal year, so is it the current fiscal year, the '26, or is this in the '27? As you said, the, the future councils will have to make this decision.
Yeah, and so the, the plan year runs on a calendar-year basis, which is why employees make decisions in the fall, winter, for starting January. But our budgets are based on fiscal year, including the health plan year. So, so yeah, this, this starts the process, this starts us towards trying to fix that seven-million-dollar hole. But we'll be back to you in the spring with next year's budget, asking you to help us with that five-million part of that seven-million-dollar issue.
Yeah. As you were developing this, did you, did you consider not including all the changes, just a portion of them, and was it something that kept you from, from breaking this up?
Again, we, we cannot afford too many more years of the kind of performance that we've had the last two years, and we're not seeing anything that's telling us that those increases are leveling off. So that was, that was primarily what, what, you know, pushed us to put all of these items out there for twenty, for 2026.
And one more thing, is it fair to say that the spousal surcharge is probably the most contributor?
Not necessarily, because the, the assumption is, is that-
To the two million?
No, I'd, actually, I'll have to go back and look, and no, I don't think so, because again, the assumption is, some of that will be cost recovery as people choose to use, their spouse chooses to go on someone else's plan, their, their employer's plan.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pender?
So, I get, I get, I understand insurance and how, you know, I understand insurance in this time of year, so again, back to the, we'll have three questions. So one is, so this is the rolling, this is annual enrollment, which usually happens in October, traditionally, everywhere. However, when you're working on this plan, I know it didn't just happen in September or August, and so when did these conversations start happening before we get to the point where it's open enrollment, if we know we were gonna make this significant change?
We started having conversations in late summer, early fall, as we, as we completed last fiscal year, as the last bills were coming in for, for claims, that, that were accrued back the last year, you know, where the bill got paid in August, but it really belonged in last fiscal year. And that's when we really began to see that we had yet another tough year, and, and they're just, the numbers weren't, we had no reason to think the numbers were gonna get any better.
And so you were able to forecast, based off of what your current state was, you were able to do the forecasting and determine this change? And I guess to me, and I, I understand that the costs of things are increasing, and so you have to be able to do anything, especially with being self-insured. So again, like you said, we have to be able to assume those costs for that, but I believe, like you said, communication is key, and so the earlier that we can let people know about this versus now you're asking people to make a decision about something that's gonna have to happen within thirty days can be challenging. But what, based off of that forecasting that you did, what percentage, and you might have to get back to me, but what percentage or what number of those can you kind of guesstimate in terms of that spousal or partner surcharge?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you all the, those details and break it down by component.
And if you can do that, it's helpful to be able to talk about that cost savings or cost recovery, because I think that makes a difference also with being able to say, if we're gonna do this, how much are we actually saving, and where that savings will then be reinvested. And then you talked a little bit about the prescription, because I do understand that, my apologies. Prescription costs are definitely increasing, and so when you talked about the nine-hundred that are on the GLP medications, and so is that cost savings? If I did that right, when you said the, the fifty-dollar copayment for that, so it's, are you saving that fifty-four hundred? If I did my math correctly, in terms of how much that's costing us, are there any rebates that come with that, which are, in terms of what medications you're using? I'm just trying to better understand, we're doing this to be able to offset the cost, but I know with this, is it incremental, is it significant enough for us to make up the deficit of the seven million that you're saying that, the two million that we're needing?
Well-
And if you can't answer it, you wanna get that?
In and of itself, no. It, it does not make up the deficit, nor was that my, my directive to staff, because we don't charge a hundred percent of our costs to our employees. We knew we had a seven-million-dollar problem. I said, "We gotta find twenty-five percent of that from our employees," because that's what we typically, we don't, we don't ask for more than that. So that's what aimed us towards a combination of changes that try to, try to address two, two and a half of that seven. We weren't trying to address five, or six, or seven of it. That would have been-
Just the two.
That would have been beyond what anybody could bear. So that was, that, that was, that was the directive. Again, you know, we will only know, in hindsight, what, what plays out the way we think it will. But I feel like the staff, I feel like our consultants really just poured into everything they could, they understood about the market, and how these kind of changes normally, normally affects the market, and came up with some, some strong estimates that, that I'm comfortable standing behind.
Thank you. Zach?
I imagine that if we knew of a seven-million-dollar deficit, that that thought process probably weighed heavily on our minds, right? When you're spending that much money and have that much of a hole, I know you said you started late summer, it probably would have made a heck of a lot of sense to have a work session on this, when you're affecting thirty-three-hundred employees. We sit here, and we talk about taking care of our employees. We talk about increasing their compensation, and then we, within a moment's notice, as of Monday, two days ago, are gonna affect their compensation with zero discussion from this council. I saw this agenda, and I thought, "This is gonna be a short meeting," and I knew I jinxed You're talking about affecting all of our employees, and we did it in a way that you've got essentially two weeks, two-thirty days, less than, to make a decision. Also, I look at this strategically, and had it been a work session, and I hate shooting from the dice, but I would have probably questioned, and it's kind of hard to hear in here a little bit, but I would have questioned a little bit about the GLP copays.
Yes.
What am I doing? Like this?
How about now?
Whoa.
Hey now. I would have questioned the GLP copay medication. You made a comment that nine-hundred roughly employees are owned one type of that selection or medication, and you don't want to have the thirty-three-hundred people pay for it. But they are paying for it.
They, indeed, they are, yes.
Right. So I would have increased that a little bit, not to discourage people from taking it, but to take less pressure off the thirty-three-hundred. I also would have, we would have had more time to have communication on this with our employees, and I know that's been said, I'll probably hammer that. Again, you're not just talking about people's healthcare, you're talking about what you state is a significant hole in our budget. Therefore, it would be our fiduciary responsibility to be knowledgeable of that. I have not been knowledgeable of that hole. I was not in that home council when y'all discussed it last time. So I didn't know it was that big a deficit. The spousal surcharge, I'm not a fan of that. I don't have a spouse, but, you know, to me, to sort out with a hundred dollars when you're only increasing the GLP deductible twenty-five dollars, to me, that doesn't work. You're punishing people's spouses. I just, to me, that doesn't work. And again, just fundamentally, timing and communication, now we've talked about this for probably twenty-five minutes. Anything, this is supposed to be somewhat of a non-controversial meeting, we're supposed to listen to the public, and having that communication with us on such an important item should have been done prior to. Oh, is that? I can't read your mind. I got Larry's email here, I'm looking at it. So yeah, I mean, those are just some concerns, and again, it comes back to, we focus on our employees, we focus on our employees, we focus on our employees, and then we kind of throw mud at them. And, and to me, that's just not fair. I think there's some other options that could have been considered strategically that were not considered. So I, this is, I'm not, I understand Larry, we're in a tough position. I don't, I don't disregard that. I think there's too many questions in this, as, as it's been presented.
Kami?
I just had two other questions, I'm sorry. Number one, when you all were looking at where to find that roughly two million dollars, did you take a look at where the max out-of-pocket was, what would happen if we went up the max out-of-pocket? I know that's difficult, because you're hitting people while they're down, but it impacts fewer people, and in looking at the numbers you gave me comparing the city's max, maximum out-of-pocket to the county's, there is a huge difference. And I don't want to go to the county level, because that's, that's pretty extreme. But I would be interested in, as you're looking at this and examining, if we had gone up some on the maximum out-of-pocket, could we have somewhat abated the penalty for the spousal? And, and is that a trade-off that, that we could have at least considered? The other question is, and I don't know enough about this, I am not an insurance geek, and though I've, though I've looked at employee insurance for my whole career, I understand there's something about rebates when it comes to some of the drug plans and drug administration. I don't know a lot about it, but can you talk to us about, are we getting all the rebates we should? Do we get credit for rebates? How, how does that work, and explain that to us?
We do, in fact, it's, it's a sizable revenue item, and it's one of the things that we do kind of use UHC to help negotiate for us. I, I, let me put some notes together for you on it, but it, it runs into millions. It's one of the ways, it's one of our revenue offsets that helps to keep what would otherwise be even higher rates, or higher taxpayer subsidies, but I can get you more details on that. But yeah, there is, there's absolutely a big piece of what we try to do is, through UHC, do, we do have some negotiating power when it comes to some of the, some of the medications that we offer in, in the plan. Can I go back to your first question? Or your first comment? Absolutely. We, you know, anything can be moved, anything can be changed, give me more here, less there. Philosophically, we've always kind of preferred, even if we have to be a little bit higher on rates, to, not to have as much risk for our employees. So that's one of the reasons why we did not seriously consider out-of-pocket maximums going up. So that's, so you don't, you don't see that on there, but, but absolutely, you could. I mean, that would be a way of passing along more cost, but that's, that can, that's an open-ended risk that we-
It is, it is.
Yeah, very much so.
It's one or another, um, that, no matter what, you can see it.
I would say not seriously, because philosophically, we just didn't want to open up that door much further.
So, Mr. Davis, what are our options at this point? Are we up against deadlines? What-
Well, we're, we're meeting with staff throughout this month. Staff have until October 27th to enter their choices in the system, so this is, this is the open enrollment time. So, yeah, we're, the, the timing is compressed, there's no doubt about it.
So wait a minute, so no changes, this is it? We have no decision on this, we have no advice, this is just what you're presenting, period?
This, this is not something that is part of the code of ordinances or anything that you would normally vote on? This is administrative item.
I understand that, but you're also talking about, while we only have two employees, we represent the city, and we represent the thirty-three-hundred employees.
Right, and certainly, any direction you give the city manager will be followed, but you're not taking a formal vote on anything that you've heard tonight, or any information that I provided.
So how will the concerns that have been expressed by pretty much everybody on council be addressed?
What we're gonna do is take collectively, I got a few notes myself, but I'm gonna go back and watch the video, just so I don't miss anything, to make sure that we sit, I sit with ACM Davis and his staff, to ensure that we come back to council with a quick response, to give you an understanding of, you know, what we can do, where we can go, and then also answer some of the other, kind of touchpoint questions, like Councilwoman Hightower asked about communication with staff. I think some of those things are important as well. So yes, to your point, I think, you know, Councilmember Matheny, you're asking, you know, as a city manager, am I going to listen to what I'm hearing today and come back to you with something? Yes, I am.
And I do want to add one other thing, I'm sorry. The new, the new rates, regardless of whether you end up scaling through the wellness rates that we instituted last year, so simply by completing a survey and getting a physical, you can reduce your rates by a hundred-and-fifty dollars. And we still have less than a thousand employees who have taken advantage of that. So we will continue to make that known, we'll continue to encourage employees to take advantage of that, because that's, we're not really asking you to do a whole lot, and, and you get a permanent reduction in your, in your rates.
My question is only, did the- My question is only, did the, did employees get the same letter memo we did?
No, what I sent to you was, you, you were the audience for that.
So, so yeah, I thi, I think that's part of the concern is...
They got something similar from the People and Culture Director, um, through, through the newsletter. And then again, they're meeting individually, department by department, location by location, to dive into this, um, on a more detailed basis. Even that, even that memo I sent y'all, as detailed as it was, it was a one-way conversation. You know, you, you didn't have the ability to ask questions or, or make sure you understood something. So that's why we encourage employees to go to open enrollment tomorrow, nine o'clock to two P.M., uh, at the Coliseum, nine A.M. to two P.M. Attend some, attend some of the other meetings, get your detailed questions answered that way.
Yeah, and I think my concern was, you know, I mean, we get a lot of newsletters, you know, and, and I'm sorry, but you know, we try to read everything, but line by line, and I think, to me, that is part of the issue, that it was kinda like, oh, wow, now it's here. And, and you know, and being kinda buried in a newsletter may have exacerbated the, the controversy a little bit. I don't wanna call it controversy, concerns. So yeah, I thi, I think in the future, maybe, that could help alleviate, at least we would know the questions earlier and be able to come to the city manager and say so.
So the, the question...
Can I just add one thing to your list? Larry, I don't wanna answer now, just wanna ask you. You talking about the co-pay is going up twenty-five dollars? So is that any kind of revenue? Generator's fifty, now it's going to seventy-five?
Just, just for those GPL drugs? Just, just for those weight reduction, those two very popular weight reduction drugs right now that, that lots of folks are on.
So there are other co-pays, um, not going up?
The other, the other drug co-pays are staying right where they are.
But you say, that amount is going up, how is it gonna make any kind of significant difference? And you can come back with the answer, you know, to do it tonight, but how much is that?
What?
So that's...
Bingo, exactly right.
Yeah. So it's not really gonna hit the, yeah, it's not, yeah.
Again, we could, we could have gone to one fifty or two hundred, but, and that would have been more, more revenue, but at some point, you, you get folks who stop taking those drugs, uh, which is the worst-case scenario. When someone's been on them, you don't want them to come off of it. So you've gotta balance that. It's like, yes, they need, they should be, they should be paying more for it, but not so much more that they stop taking the medication.
My, uh, the question I have, I know that we are facing a budget deficit on this. Is there a way that we could phase this in? I do think it's a bit abrupt, um, especially for people who are living paycheck to paycheck. This is a pretty big bump in a monthly expense. Is there a way to, instead of maybe doing a hundred dollars for the spouse, can you do fifty and let them know what it'll be next year? Or are there ways that we can at least eliminate the, um, immediate, immediate impact? Allow our employees to budget that for the next year?
We can certainly consider that, absolutely.
And this impacts everybody who works thirty hours. At that thirty-hour rate is, you know, they work thirty, not forty.
Right.
So that's even less money that they're gonna have at thirty hours, when they're thirty-hour employees.
And so when you, later on tonight, when you forgot to have asked, yes, this, this involves our retiring employees as well.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be too difficult.
If you could give us maybe an option, if there's a way to phase it in, and I have a question which might be a little off-topic. Insulin, I know when I pick up my insulin, I'm on two different types, um, it's fifty dollars a month. Is it fifty because that's what the feds set it at? Is that what the cost of insulin is, or is there still a markup?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know about insulin. I'll, I'll, I'll find out.
Cause I, I, I think we have a number of employees, um, throughout our systems that are also insulin-dependent. Absolutely.
Can I just make one comment to you? One of the things that you mentioned is that driving up our costs is the number of employees using the, uh, emergency room, really, as their position. Is there any way of attacking that situation and dealing with it for a more positive outcome?
A, again, we've made, we've made what we considered to be a fair, but hopefully noticeable increase in the co-pay for that trip. Again, we could have gone higher, but we weren't trying to be punitive. It was more about gradually hoping to change behavior and get the, and begin to get the thought that that's not where my primary care should come from.
Okay, thank you. Ladies, thank you for your patience. We have Shirley Samuel.
Good evening, and this truly is an, an honor and to have an opportunity to come to you before you about this, and I'm not sure that this issue has anything to do with budgeting or, you know, monies or anything, but as a senior citizen who lives in an area that has been historically designated area, um, in the Benbow Road area, and, um, and between the time that I was in Atlanta and I was gone for almost two years, and I've come back and trafficking is very different. Police presence, I don't see them. It's almost nonexistent. I've had to, it's the excessive speeding on Friendly and Market Street and Gate City Boulevard and even on Benbow Road. And these are narrow streets, these are, you know, these are not wide streets. It's, it's dangerous, but I don't see any, any law enforcement around. And I used to, I, I used to see them parked, like in parking lots that nobody was using during the day, but they're just, they're just not there. There is, um, a young man who is homeless and he sits, um, on the corner of, or that island that is between Gate City Boulevard and Marle Boulevard. And, uh, and what I'm gonna say about this is he's kind of intimidating. He will walk right up to my car and stand there, start pointing at me and talking to me, and he, he does it every time, except for when I remember to go on down and don't turn that way, go a different way. I have called about him. Nothing happens, he's still there next day. And, um, it's, it's, it's just, um, making calls about the Fourth of July fireworks in a residential area, very close to my home, where there are roofs and, and trees and all of that. And I'm not talking about just the little things that the kids can do on the street, on the sidewalk, I'm talking about the ones that are shot up into the sky. And, um, and I could actually see that. And it's, it's, it's just starting to feel just a little bit unsafe to me. And, um, I live alone, like a lot of, a lot of us do, and, um, enforcement of leash laws, it's not happening. If you call about it, they don't do anything about it.
So Ms. Samuel, you, you, you've not gotten any, what response have you gotten when you have called anything? Anybody show up? Anybody call you back?
I got a call back once, but, um, there were, there was, um, one, and I got the call back and they didn't do anything. And, um, I got a call back once about leash laws. There's a dog that gets out and he roams around, and he roams around so much that I was gonna get a delivery, and the delivery man said, "I'm not gonna deliver it to you unless you come out here in the street and get it from me, and I'm going to use the reason we'll be undeliverable because of dog." And I was so okay, I went out to the street to go get my package.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's, um, it's a nuisance. And the dog is not mean, he's not dangerous, he's sweet. But he shouldn't be just filled out, he just roam around, and he scares people cause he's big, he's, he's big, and so people, people get frightened at it. And so they're not observing leash laws. It looks like they just don't even exist. But the, the speeding, I had to come to, um, I had to come to a halt when I was coming out Bennett Street to Marle Boulevard to turn left. And the cars that were across the street facing me, that light stays red for them so that I can make that, and I get a green arrow. And a motocycler just pulled right on over, but just pulled right on out, and I was out in the middle of the street turning left, and he yelled at me, "Give me a brake, lady", but there was not. There's no, I mean, it's, it's like, I used to see police officers, but I don't see them anymore. Even when I'm downtown, I just don't see them, and I, it's, um, it, it, it just kinda bothers me, makes me feel like we're not, there's nobody watching over us to make us feel secure. And, um, at my age, it's kind of, it's, it's a big concern for me, so, um...
And, and we do, we do appreciate your concern, and I thank you for coming here and talking about it. I think you've sent us two emails in the past.
She has.
Did you get a follow-up from staff? Has anybody reached out to you?
Yes.
They did.
I got follow-up from staff from you guys, that's, that's how I got here. They invited me, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did, I got, I got, I got a response, and I, thank you. I, I really do appreciate that. But I just think some attention needs to be brought to it. I have heard that people think that there is too much police presence. I'm sorry, I don't see that. I'm seeing if you, if you're do, if you're breaking laws, you're doing something wrong, then you should be held accountable for it. And so, um, I, I just, it's...
And thank you, we, we do appreciate that statement. I think that's very important.
Yeah, and so I, I know there is a neighborhood association close to where you live, did the lady ever call you?
Yes, we made, we made the call, we just haven't, we haven't had, um, we haven't, she hasn't called me about a meeting yet.
But I, I would like to ask staff if they would make sure that we have, you know, some people just asking for a ride-by, they don't want over saturation of police, but just a ride-through, a ride-by, and I've asked for that multiple times. So, um, can you connect with Ms. Samuel and make sure that that information gets out so she can, she needs to feel safe, one of our seniors in our community?
Well, most of us that live in that area are, are, I mean, um, I lived, I, I grew up here, and teachers that I had at that time lived in the houses that are on my street. And, um, most of them are gone, but some of their children and grandchildren are living there. But, um, it, you know, and...
And we, we certainly hear what it is you're saying, and, um, we'll have somebody follow up with you, especially regarding the concerns that you mentioned here this evening.
If she could leave her cell, her cellphone number or some type of contact information with the communications fix at the door, I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, well, thank you for hearing me.
And thank you, thank you for bringing in our attention.
After our next speaker, we have Michael O'Neil, Robert Hope, and Malik Hugh. If you would come to the window side of the room. Ms. Otis?
Hello, council, my name is Willie Otis, I'm a twenty-year-old founder of Not Just Headlines. Our goal is to increase voter turnout in local elections among Gen Z, and the way that I've done this is by interviewing every single candidate who is gonna show up on the ballot in November. So I'm just coming by after primaries and before election season to say thank you guys for being interviewed by me, you guys did not have to do that. And all the candidate interviews will be launching this Friday at ten P.M. at Not Just Headlines Media. And I wanna say that the work that we are doing is getting noticed this past summer, from June to now, on our Instagram, we have gotten twenty million views on our content. So there are people who are young, who do want to get involved in local politics, and it is my goal to make it as accessible as possible so people never have to skip a name on the ballot ever again, because the work that you guys do is very important. So we know these elections are won by a few hundred votes, and since June, we have gotten almost five thousand followers. So people are gonna be paying attention to these elections more often. So I did wanna say thank you guys for being interviewed by me, because your interviews will be seen, and I have invited you guys this Friday out to the premier launch, so you guys can interact with some of the young voters there. I've had people come to me being like, "I'm coming Friday, I've never voted in an election ever before, and if I was gonna vote local, it would be here because of the work that you're doing." So I would just like to say thank you, and if you have not RSVP'd, go ahead and do it already, because you're gonna wanna say that you were in the room where it happened. Thank you.
I, I wanna say thank you to you, we had our primary yesterday, and we have over two hundred thousand registered voters, and less than ten percent of those showed up to vote yesterday. So any help you could get, drive that vote out, we certainly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Otis? Just for the benefit of those watching, do you wanna share with them the time and the place, et cetera, of your event Friday?
So I have a website called Not Just Headlines Media dot com, but it will also be distributed on YouTube, Spotify, Amazon, and Apple, and this is in a video format, so you can listen to it, but you can also see me sit one-on-one with every single candidate. So say we have the District One candidates, both of them will be in one video, and then at-large candidates will get their own video, the mayor, mayoral candidates will get their own video as well. So it's not just Headlines Media dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good work, thank you. Michael O'Neil?
Hi, how's everyone? Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Vaughn, um, my name is Trey O'Isley, I represent GSO Peace Corp. in Richmond Center, and I just wanna take this moment to thank you for giving us opportunity to speak today. But we wanna use this as a formal introduction to let you know exactly who we are and what we do for the city here, which means a great deal to us. GSO Peace Corp. is in Richmond Center located at one twenty-two North M Street, and what we do is for the community and for all the kids, that's right, yeah. We are, we teach them to do, also some studio engineering, as well as media and podcast training. Our program is totally free, so we're letting everybody in here know that our doors are open to the public. We have kids, we do gaming and technology, and we're just trying to expand our brand here in the greater city of Greensboro to reach out and give back to the, uh, to the youth and to our community. And, um, that's pretty much it. We have some literature that we're gonna provide you with to give you some insight exactly what we do outside of GSO Peace Corp., as well as with the Officer Community Safety, you know, doing, um, interventions and stuff like that. Now, this is my family, my partner, Michael O'Neil, and he's gonna take it from here.
Hey, how's everybody doing? Thank you for allowing us to speak today. Like my partner said, we're GSO Peace Corp., uh, we work with the Office of Community Safety, and we're just here to give you a formal introduction of who we are. I spoke to you guys a few months back about a community park and, uh, basketball court, and, uh, we have begun to move forward with it as far as the budget and getting things together. So we're also gonna be emailing you guys over information concerning that, and hopefully we can get your help and get you guys to, um, just help us continue to get back to the community and create positive, safe spaces for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, um, Mr. Hope? Is he? No, okay, after, Mr. Hope? Okay, then Malik? Mr. Hope?
First of all, congratulations to everyone in here who has achieved higher education, such as myself. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from High Point University. It is a strong tribute to my deceased parents that I choose to volunteer. This includes High Point Theater, Greensboro's Carolina Theater, among several other art groups. Now, as an employee in good standing in the past at Greensboro Coliseum, I applied for a customer service position at Tanger Center. In fact, the Personnel Director of the Greensboro Coliseum, uh, said that could be allowed due to company transfer program. I was declined, hiring by a Tanger Center manager. So I chose as a second option a dream to volunteer freely. In fact, I requested a conference meeting at the Coliseum with several managers, it was poorly attended. So confused, I spoke to the City of Greensboro Human Resources who clarified a law or provision that I never had completely understood nor was made aware of. I knew in fact... I knew, in fact, the employees that were actually working at the, at this company. I received a strong letter by FedEx from Deputy Manager, uh, concerning my employment. I had said to others that I wish management would be kinder and more understanding in my concerns too about how I had got so much figured out in favor of some of my men. I felt I could practice my first evening by the same mistake. I just realized it was going to be wild. I thought my name would have been written in granite and looked to be effective, hard to bear after every apology through meeting. My efforts have been through the streets of Greensboro City Council from local to the city, which is a significant and consistent achievement. While growing, I'm not a set parent, I have very limited hours to speak to City Manager. It was only the staff. My efforts to speak to the City Manager were never allowed. My further, very fewer questions spoken all to Mayor Nancy Vaughn were never granted. I felt that as a citizen of Kewford County, I would at least have that right. But on another regard, I am here and I do congratulate Mayor Vaughn for the wonderful economic boom that I have seen this, my home county, prosper through. There's much to say, including differences of working conditions and my impairments. I just have three minutes. While I have received some interest from local media sources and beyond, my experiences have never yet been told to the general public. Maybe at least because of the unbearable pain and suffering I have had, my experience can be helpful to any person who wishes to volunteer for organizations. I promise, I, I apologize to, for reading so quickly. For this, among other reasons, I propose a brief statement be given or communicated to explain any restrictions of volunteering in a non-hidden way to any Tanger Center or First Horizon applicant. Uh, this will be set up by the City of Greensboro and could be submitted or in a statement wise that at least communicates to all employees and applicants. I'm, uh, so sorry. May I have more time?
No, we stick with the three minutes. I do know that this has been a situation that's been going on for quite some time. And, um, I believe that HR has, um, addressed your concerns. Um, but I don't believe that we're going to be able to do what it is you want done.
Property of Corn says, "I should leave."
Um, after Malik, we have Jason Hicks, Andy Zimmerman, and Dr. Tanya Palacios.
Hey, City Council. Um, I've got one thing I want to say. Um, if I could have my Beacon Bridge family stand up for a minute? Because I wanted you to know, City Council, my Beacon Bridge family has been there for me and they are helping me with housing. And I wanted to let them know to recognize, one, my friend Josh, stand back. And I want to recognize him for being a great peer support member and being there. And I also want to also, Ms. Tanya Palacios, she's been there by my side when I needed her to help me. So I wanted to make sure I shout them out as my family, as my peer support family, and my community advocates for the homeless community. They're right beside me when I got something to do. But right on y'all's screens, I'm gonna go ahead and get into it. As you'll see, I have my first annual event next Saturday coming up. And Ms. Penda, I know you said you're going to be there. I want some of the other ones, I want some of my other City Council members to be there in attendance because it's going to be big. It's going to be major, major. It's going to show light to the city. And I'm going to come out and make this big event so popular for us because I want to show it for my homeless members. I got a trunk or treat, as you see on the bottom of the screen of it, right down here at the bottom. I have a trunk or treat. I also have fire truck. I have, also have donations coming out. So please make sure y'all come out, make sure y'all show up because this is for my homeless community. My homeless community have been asking and I have been planning and I have been talking to them. And I have been letting my IRC family know that this is going, all the, all the nonprofit stuff that I do for them is going back to the IRC. Um, Trey Davis, I know we had talked a couple of weeks ago and, um, I've been waiting to get back with you. And I want to see when we can have a time that we can have a day that we could talk and, and get, get a groundtable discussion so that where we can kind of get some things planned out for my homeless community, like we had talked about that day that I seen you when the situation went down. And I had had a chance to talk to Trey because it was some stuff that my city members and us, we've been asking for some of the police. I know a lot of the public has been asking for the police to stop harassing some of us. And we want to ask for that to be looked at if they can, to stop coming as like we, like somewhere or put in a new measure. But Nancy Vaughn, before your last term, before you leave out of this office this time, can you please try to see if we can get this lifted for us to get back in the park and feed? I'm gonna make sure my, make sure that everybody picks up their trash at the end. I'm gonna make sure that that gets done. I want to ask Trey Davis if you can look into that and see if we can lift that hand from the park for a minute, please? Because we really want to get back because the food, the feeding is too far away.
We did, um, we did say that it could be done on the Green Street side of MMOB. And I know that other organizations have used it. So I think you could just let people know that there's a different place, but it's very close by. I mean, it's.
I know, but we, we, we've been asking and we've been coming up because it's getting hard for us to go long ways.
I understand, but we do have an alternative for you and it's right here on the MMOB property.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks?
Good evening, council. It's good to be back in person after a break. So, uh, in September of twenty twenty-three, uh, my daughter and I were in Center City Park uh, when security ordered unhoused people to leave. She looked at me and asked why, and I didn't have an answer. There was no safety concern, uh, no offer of help, really just seemed like a sweep of, for appearances sake. Um, but that question never left me. So, you know, me being who I am, I started asking questions and looking closer. And I saw the same pattern again and again. Uh, leaders obsessed with appearances instead of outcomes, spending taxpayer dollars to really polish downtown while ignoring the very people who live here. Since that day in the park, I've pushed back and I'll admit, you know, I haven't always handled it in ways that my daughter has been proud. And I'll admit that she's told me that. Um, uh, she's nearly sixteen years old now, old enough to see the difference between words and actions, between photo ops and real accountability. And I've spent, you know, quite some time now fighting for change, not just for her, but for every person who has been treated as disposable in this city. Under Zach Matheny's leadership, DJI has used public money on trips, hotels, meals, and entertainment most families in Greensboro could never afford. And I think that, you know, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll say that, you know, my daughter is learning that people get swept from parks, uh, for investors. Some get stopped for their skin color. Police Department refers investigations, but police associations endorse anyways. She's learning whether integrity matters here or whether power just protects power. My hope has always been that DJI and the city would finally embrace transparency so accountability could follow. For the first time, I believe we may be closer to that than we've ever been with an SBI investigation underway and more people than ever stepping up to advocate for change. Appreciate y'all letting me come tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Good evening, City Council members. Andy Zimmerman. And first of all, I want to congratulate those candidates that did well in the primary voting. And then I'd also like to just mention, uh, Mayor Vaughn, Dr. Wells, Councilwoman Nancy Hoffman. I'm gonna miss you. We've not agreed all the time, but we've agreed a lot. And I respect you for what you've done for this city and for your leadership and for your values. I applaud you. I will miss you greatly. Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to, uh, talk a minute about, uh, a project that both myself and another group has, uh, tried to, uh, embark on on the corner of Gate City Boulevard and Eugene Street. Um, I would love to, City Manager Davis, I would love to meet with the Transportation Department and any other person of interest that is concerned about the parking on the South End. And not just for the development's sake, but for the people that have invested a lot of money and are concerned about a project that was attempted to be pushed through that would have made the parking worse on the South End, not better. I really am asking the new City Council and new leadership, because I don't think this is going to go through the existing City Council and leadership in Greensboro, that we take a look at and sit down as a community and figure out what we can do about the parking on the South End. And not at the expense of a great housing development, whether it's by me or another group. To me, it doesn't matter. What matters is that we supply parking on the South End that I think is greatly needed to continue the investment and respect the investment that's already been made. So I would love to, again, schedule a meeting with the Transportation Department and anybody that is concerned about the South End before future development makes it worse. I have addressed and re-submitted a proposal for not only the corner property in downtown on Elm and Gate City, but also two parcels on Eugene Street that I think would absolutely transform that entrance to our city. And we've addressed the parking issue. And, uh, I just hope that we can take a look at it again before we make the, uh, the situation worse. Um, I also want, just want to add to every other City Council person here. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the difference that you make in downtown. Uh, I know there are people that would like to complain, but I want to applaud you for your leadership and thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, after Dr. Palacios, I hope I said it right. Um, our final speaker is Cheryl McIver. If I have not called your name and you think that you've signed up, please see our courier. Doctor?
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, members of the Greensboro City Council and city staff. I'm here representing Beacon Bridge, a North Carolina-based behavioral health and substance use disorder agency. Our mission is simple but critical, to meet people where they are in that moment of crisis and to make sure no one in our community is left without timely compassionate care. Recently, Trillium Health Resources released an RFP for Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center right here in Greensboro. This center is intended to serve as a front door for individuals experiencing psychiatric or substance use crisis, offering stabilization, evaluation, and connection to long-term services rather than relying on hospital emergency rooms or law enforcement as the first point of contact. We submitted our proposal with the hope that this council would stand with us, that you would see this not just another healthcare project, but a public safety and quality of life investment for the people of Greensboro. Before submitting and again afterwards, we formally reached out to request a meeting to discuss our vision, answer questions, and collaborate on how this urgent care could work in partnership with city services. Unfortunately, we never got a response. I want to be clear, this is not about blame or frustration. It's about opportunity. We know that Greensboro's leaders care deeply about addressing homelessness, mental health, and the strain these issues place on emergency response systems. We simply want the chance to sit down and share how this urgent care center could be part of the solution, how it would, how it could reduce unnecessary ER visits, give law enforcement a reliable dropout point, and create a coordinated path to recovery and stability. But beyond the data and the systems, there's the human side. Every person who walks through our doors is someone's child, parent, friend, or neighbor. They are people who deserve dignity, care, and the chance to heal. And every time a city invests in behavioral health access, it sends a powerful message that we value our people enough to meet their needs and compassion instead of crisis. So tonight, I respectfully renew our request for a meeting and council leadership. We're not asking for funding or endorsement, just a conversation, a chance to share that, a chance to share what we've built, to listen to your priorities and to explore how together we can make Greensboro a leader in behavioral health access and crisis care. Thank you for your time and service and your commitment to this community. I hope we continue this conversation soon, not in a public comment slot, but across the table, working side by side for the people of Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me?
I said, can we get her information?
Yeah.
What RFP, what, what RFP went out? That had to be counted.
I can assume it's an RFP from Trillium, not from us.
Okay. Because I was going to say, I hadn't seen anything.
And I believe that the county has three seats on the Trillium board. I think, um, Mr. Alston is on that board and I can't remember who the other two are.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have a seat on that.
We don't, okay.
Councilwoman Hot Tower, we, uh, the, the Department of Community Safety, uh, the recommend, McNeil has been speaking with them. Uh, and so I'll get you some follow-up. I think if, what, uh, the young lady was referring to is a network of folks that they've all been working with. So I'll get you some, I'll get, uh, Ms. McNeil to, to give you a call, to give an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl McIver, four zero four, West MacArthur Drive. Speaking of RFP, um, and communication, seems like there is a communication problem internally and externally. Uh, a week or two weeks' notice about increases in premiums, um, doesn't seem very well, um, business or professional-like for your employees. I digress. Um, is it the city's position when an RFP is put out and it closes that the application should be completed and fully intact? I would think so. Is it the city's position when an RFP is completed that an organization or applicant can come back and request a great modification to their application after it has been closed? Let me give you an example. There was an RFP for Neighborhood Development for Lytec. Uh, Ms. Dunceberry, um, submitted an application. She was a lead in submitting an application for twenty-eight thirteen Rundam Road. I see that the application should have closed on March twenty-first. I see final responses on March twenty-fifth. However, on March thirty-first, an email was sent asking for modification to their application. They wanted to reduce from one twenty to eighty-four, which requires significant change in their application. It was recommended on April first by the Neighborhood Development that they did not reopen that application for the modification. So how did that happen? Who approved for the RFP to be reopened? Not just that, when that application or that RFP was reopened for this project specifically to redo their site drawings and numbers or whatever needed to be done, was that also informed to the other RFP applicants? Did they get notification that there was reopening and if they need to make changes, they could make changes? Is this legal? I don't know. But that is what happened. Thank you all for making sure I got my public records yesterday after a month. I have not been able to go all the way through them, but this came from those public records. So just my question, does the city allow for RFPs to be reopened? And then the Neighborhood Development recommended they did not reopen it for this modification? But the modification happened. So who approved it? I mean, is that standard process? Those are just my questions. Thank you.
I don't have you on my list, and I don't believe you... They're not all speakers, Luther's not here, Mr. Fox is for another item, I'm not sure what Tony is. Okay, I guess Mr. Hayes tried to sign on and couldn't, he was here before six. You have three minutes.
Well, we're going to miss all y'all good folks. But the thing is, my name is Tony Hayes, I live at 1415 Dunbar Street, and I guess everybody knows that, but I'm the move, emotionally. But the thing is, I asked y'all a question before, and most of you didn't give me no answer. You set up there looking like you're ignorant, stupid, and can't give no answers. The thing is, how many cars can you own in the city of Greensboro? And the thing is, when you buy a car, if you don't register it, the car is still in the same person's name. I tried to contact your city lawyer up here and talk to them, they won't return the car, but you want to charge everybody else a fine, still because I didn't own the house. But that's the reason I said, what is your, you know, what is the law of owning cars? Can you answer that?
If you have a car, it has to be registered and insured.
No, it don't. A car, only car is, you buy a car, you don't have to register. You register a car if you're going to put tags, the insurance on it. You go around to people's houses and take cars, do you all have the title? Do you own them? You have the city of Greensboro, you have city Greensboro code enforcement, you've got too many chiefs, not enough in you. Everybody wants to be a chief up here, there's not enough in you. But the thing is, you've got code enforcement, you've got violations, and all this stuff right here, you've got folks coming out. And the whole month, the whole month, the last month, you had people just riding by taking pictures of my house. Yeah. But the thing is, you know, it's stupid. It's stupid. You've got people work for the city, goes in the city cars, out to the park, the cars sitting out there running, and people just, taxpayer's people money, taking money for nothing. But you can always watch out for me, though. But, you know, it's stupid. That's why I'm saying, how many cars do you own? How many cars does city Greensboro own? How many cars do the county own? But you can't answer the question I asked you. But you can sit up here and look at me and holler, what am I talking about? I'm talking about the same thing. You've taken my cars, but every one of them run, and you don't have to put a tag and insurance on neither one of them. You can buy any car you want until you get ready to register your car in the state of Raleigh. That's when a car is registered, then it owns you. Thank you.
I think that Mr. Hayes' question was answered by Code. He's talked to Code numerous times. I know he's unhappy with me, he's unhappy with Code, but he has a neighbor that sends pictures too and shows cars that are right by her driveway, where she can't get out safely. I just got one the other day. So it's just about being good neighbors, it really is.
Well, we've gotten a number of emails regarding the property.
Right, from her, yes.
The question, the question that he's asking, how many cars can you own?
Right.
We don't have a number about the cars you own, we do have something about how many you can have in your yard.
Right.
I'm sorry, you can't, you can't speak from the...
No, but that's, that's the problem.
I don't know if he had any time left.
No, he didn't have any time left, he didn't.
No.
I'm sorry, then, unless there's a question, unless there's a question...
She asked a question, she said about the car that you've got owned, I said, how many cars can you own?
She did not ask a question of you.
I said, we have a rule about the number of cars you can have in your yard.
In your yard.
And where they, and how they should be there. If you have cars in your yard, then you're supposed to have some pavement there. So it's not about us owning the cars, it's what you do with the cars.
Well, the code enforcement could define anything wrong with it.
We don't, we have front yard parking violations, so I know you've had conversations about that.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Hayes was our final speaker. We did have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, but I don't remember...
We didn't vote.
No. Goldie, were you the...
Yes.
And I think you seconded it?
Sure.
Okay, council, please vote. And that passes nine to zero. We have no public hearing items on the agenda. We do have two general business items, make it three. Item I point one is a resolution readopting the Greensboro Alcohol Beverage Control ABC Board Travel Policy. Mr. Fox is here, if there are any questions. This item is moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mr. Matheny. It passes nine to zero. Item I point two is a resolution authorizing the merger of the Town of Pleasant Gardens ABC system with the City of Greensboro ABC system. Moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mr. Holston. And that passes nine to zero. Now we have item I point three, a resolution approving contract 2025-0050 in the amount of 632,000 with ASJ Wilson Construction LLC for the Pickable Court renovation and new restroom facility at Bryan Park.
Move the item.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Abuziater, seconded by Dr. Wells. Council, please vote.
Oh, it has decent numbers for change. Yeah, it has decent, participate.
I am voting yes, but it's not... That passes nine to zero. Okay, now, boards and commissions, Mrs. Hightower?
I think I'm good for now.
I think so. Nothing. Mr. Holston?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Matheny?
No.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, I'm going to appoint Rebecca Whitney for the Commissioner on the Status of Women. She's replacing Catherine Magid. That position's been open for a while.
Seconded by Mrs. Sirm. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. I do have an appointment to the, to the GC Jack. David Coates was elected to the Board of Education, so he has resigned his position. I'd like to appoint Sandra Davis Westerville to fill his position.
Move the, move.
Moved by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes nine to zero. Mayor Protem?
None this evening, thank you.
Dr. Wells?
None this evening.
Mrs. Sirm?
No.
And Ms. Pinder?
No.
Okay, council comments? I have a couple, but, you know, we have, we have people talk to us about speeding through neighborhoods all the time.
Yes.
And I know that GDOT is trying their best to come up with different traffic calming devices to slow down traffic. But I think I've asked most of you, and I think I've asked the city manager, to take a look at David Caldwell as you're getting onto Holden Road. And I just think that is a mess, and it is an accident waiting to happen. I don't know if police and fire were contacted at all about this traffic calming, but you've got Battleground and Holden, and David Caldwell connects Battleground and Holden. So I imagine it's used as a cut-through, and probably the neighbors are upset about it. But basically, you've just stopped the road, you've cut it in half, and I went and sat there and I watched people as they were approaching this traffic calming device, and they had absolutely no clue what to do. To get, you were coming from Battleground and you were going toward David Caldwell, you had to drive all through the neighborhood to figure out how to get on to Holden. And then seeing people come up Holden trying to get to Battleground, they're just sitting there thinking, well, where do I go from here? I don't know how well thought out that was. I can understand that the people were concerned with speeding, but you have a massive roadblock between two major streets and no signs telling people where to go. I just would like us to take a look at, you know, if this is what we're doing for traffic calming, I think we've got to go back to the drawing board. I don't know if anybody else wants to...
Yeah, I would just say that I've tried to negotiate that twice now, once at your request, and once because I forgot that the change was there. And there are people that, like, stop in the middle of the street because they can't figure out what to do or where to go, and then they drive a block and stop again because they don't know where to go or how to get their, get out of the maze. And it just, I think it's problematic, and I think we need to take a second look at that installation.
And the, if you're on Holden Road and you want to go into that neighborhood, many of those entrances have been cut off with, with traffic cones. You know, I think it's really good that we're trying to do these traffic calming. We, I know that this is done at the request of the neighborhood, but I think we, you know, this might have been something that maybe we should have tried a speed bump on. I know that we, we don't like to put them, we've been, we've talked about this, I think, since I got on council initially in 1997. People said, give us a traffic speed bump, and we've always said, no, no, no. And I know we're concerned about public safety, because they have to slow down, and that could be a life and death difference. But clearly, if they, if they go up to this traffic calming, there's nowhere for them to go. I don't know what a fire truck is going to do. They're going to just have to drive around neighborhoods, and if the, if the police car is responding to a call...
They're going fast.
Yes. And they're going to be, and then, I don't know, did we talk to the school system about it? You know, there are school buses, and I just think it's problematic, and that's one that I saw. I know that there are others throughout the city, but I'd like to know where these types of diversions have been put in place, and I really think that we have to reconsider this.
Well, I'm going to add one to the list of relooking at.
Please.
My daughter lives out by 840, so Yanceville, when you turn into that neighborhood, that roundabout is not a roundabout. Many people come in one way, if you're coming this way, they run, they run that stop sign. And so it's, it's not a roundabout, it's a curveabout. It goes this way and then goes back, and the people coming this way down, they see you coming out the neighborhood, but they don't stop, they keep running on going. I don't know who designs these things, but it's not done very well, at all, so.
And I know that people have been screaming for these traffic calming devices in their neighborhood. I know there was an application process. We get emails about speeding in neighborhoods just about every day.
Every day.
We had a woman who came up and spoke about speeding. I want us to be reactive, I want us to be aggressive, but this just seems like a mess. And if, you know, I would hope that you leaders would go take a drive and see what you think. And there have got to be easier ways for us to do this, and to think that we've, you know, it's taken 18 months, two years to get where we are today, and that doesn't seem like much of a solution.
And I'm concerned because on Phillips Avenue, I've been living out there for years. This is the first time people are passing like they're on the highway. Coming around, now anybody pass me on Phillips, and now they pass you and fly. Come down your, your street, your neighborhood street, just flying. I think we're going to have to do something, because it's getting to be a problem, and you just cannot stop on the back.
Well, you know, I'd like an update on the red light cameras. I know that we're thinking of getting them in five intersections. Mrs. Hightower has been screaming about them for a while. Do we have them on order? Are they going to be installed?
We'll get you an update. I don't want to give you the wrong number, but we have, we are in the process. I don't want to give you the wrong date, because I've been promising Councilwoman Hightower for a long time. So I don't want to say something and it's wrong, but we are in the process of ordering and all the things that need to happen to make sure they, they're up online.
The only thing I'll add to that is the vendor did have to get licensed with the alarm board, which is going to take some time as well, so we've intentionally had to slow-play it a little bit to allow the time for that to happen, so.
Okay.
We'll get you an update.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see it in this lifetime.
Yeah, I'd like them in the next 54 days.
Exactly.
In addition to that, I think it was weekend before last, we did have the run for the Greenway for the, really, the Greenway looks wonderful. Finally, all four miles are done. In the final section, they're still waiting for some artwork and plantings and things like that, but this has been a really long project, but it is beautiful. An awful lot of private money has been raised. All the artwork that you see was paid for privately. People talk about how long it's taken and the cost, but I think if you go back and you look at that area before the Greenway, you realize how much utilities have to be moved. Streets were, streets were reconfigured because they needed to be reconfigured, not because of the Greenway. Water and sewer projects were done. In addition to the Greenway, there was an awful lot of infrastructure improvements, and it, you know, it connects a whole bunch of different neighborhoods, and I think that's great. Each neighborhood has been preserved, they have artwork there that is special for them. So it was great to see it open. I know the official grand opening will be in the spring, but it's nice to know that the hardscape is finished after all these years. So, comments, Ms. Pinder?
I have a couple. Going back, I believe she left, but Ms. Shirley Samuels just talked about the importance of safety. And so this, last week, I had an opportunity to do a mental health and wellness walk with the police department that also included our faith-based community, as well as Be Heart, and also the Family Justice Center. And so I know that that's one of the initiatives that they continue to do throughout the city, and would encourage other neighborhoods, because as mentioned, connecting her to her local neighborhood association. And the more we can continue to do that, that's another example of how we have protecting and serving, and not necessarily policing, that we, that continues to come up, and so highly encourage that. And that was just, it was just nice to be able to see the community come out. And we had over 50 individuals that actually did that, including children. So again, just to talk about the community engagement and safety, that's another way. One, to get some physical activity out, but then also building a relationship with others that are within the community. So I just wanted to highlight that. Had an opportunity to go to the McConnell Ridge ribbon cutting, and really want to lift that up, because we talk about the different types of housing and housing options that we have in the city. And that, to me, just hit home, because it was an awesome opportunity to be able to see housing that has a price point of 260 up to 320. And we talk a lot about making sure that we have a diversification of different types of housing stock, and that's an example of some... And that's an example of someone who is really, you know, if you're a fully emerged adult, if you're getting ready to graduate from college and with some of the employment opportunities that we happen to have here, here's something that it's hoping, it's, it's tangible hope. And so I just, I just thought it was an amazing thing. And many people have reached out saying, when is it open? Can you go ahead and start now? So I just really wanted to just celebrate that because there are things that are happening, and this is happening in Southeast Greensboro, so I just wanted to lift that up. Also, and then this week is A&amp;T Homecoming, so an awesome opportunity, Aggie pride, an awesome opportunity for the whole city to celebrate. And there's something for everyone to be able to participate, down to the babies, up into the, our active adults or our seniors. And so I highly encourage if you have an opportunity to be able to go out and celebrate that. And then last, we had an opportunity today to attend the Community and Economic Engagement Summit that was put on by A&amp;T. So another opportunity of the greatness that's happening in our city and how we're connecting and coming together. But another opportunity for us to continue to look at these ways and how we can connect with our younger generation, but also just look at how we, this is, the time is right in meeting the moment now and how we can continue to grow our city. So thank you.
Thank you. I did have one other thing. Earlier this week, I met with GUM, the Greensboro Urban Ministry, to talk about the We Shelters. As you know, we had four churches last year who really stepped up, and each church sheltered about 12 individuals. They were really disappointed that they were not included this year in the winter sheltering plan. They would still like to have an active role, and I did ask them to put together a proposal and send it to me that I would share with council and staff. You know, we talk a lot about having the community step up and be part of the solution. We've often called out our faith leaders. And here you have four churches that spent significant money of their own last year to upfit. They had to get the beds, the bedding, lockers, a whole array of things. The church that I attend, Grace Community Church, they were one of those We Shelters. And I know how much money that they invested. I'm sure the other churches did too. And the congregation was really good about supporting the shelters with food. Everybody got a hot meal every night and a breakfast in the morning. So they were disappointed not to be included in the winter sheltering, and I'm disappointed that they weren't included. We're doing a great job over at Pomona. We have five RVs over there and the pallets. Last year, we only had two. There'll be about 120 people over at Pomona. I, I know that the caseworkers at Pomona do great work about getting the individuals in the pallet shelters into permanent housing. There wasn't the same type of casework at the churches, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't still try to engage with the, with the churches or other faith-based institutions. So we seem to be in good shape when it comes to the Pomona. The shelters will be moved over. There will be no downtime for the people who are at the Regency right now. They will be able to move into the RVs. So there was some concern that they might be unhoused for two weeks or so, but they will be immediately rehoused into the RVs. So there will be more people housed at that site than in years past, so that is a, that's a really good plus. But I'd like us to see how we could also include the churches.
Can I add something to that?
Please.
Because that was my other comment. I wanted to, and I guess this is directed to Assistant Manager Harold. Can you talk about that RFP process real quick? Because after you talk about that, also just can you highlight the event that's coming up on Monday, which I think will answer some of that and just talk, if you can.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll say first, the McGirt Horton Library on Monday at 6 o'clock, there is a meeting. All of our faith partners have been invited to come and talk to us about what they can do to assist us with, with winter sheltering. We heard that they were disappointed that they were not gonna be providing the We Shelters, and so this is, we're trying to respond to that need or that concern or that question and just kind of have an open forum with them and see what they can do to assist. As far as RFP goes, the, the RFP went out to anyone who wanted to apply. We did change what we were doing this winter, but anyone was welcome to, to apply. The Greensboro Urban Ministry did come to the initial meeting. They did not apply for the RFP. Only one entity applied for the two arms of the RFP. One was winter sheltering, one was case management at Pomona Park. The IRC did apply for both of those. They were the only entity into that is who we ended up contracting with. In doing it this way, I think many of you have heard this figure, we are saving $200,000 and we are doubling our case management from last winter. So that, that is the trade-off in doing it this way. I'll answer any other questions.
And is, is the Urban Ministry aware of this meeting that's gonna happen on Monday? And have those specific churches been invited?
We invited a wide swath of churches, including the ones that assisted with us, assisted us last year. Councilwoman Pender was nice enough to share it in some of that places that, that she knows a lot of the faith partners, and so I think it's been widely advertised.
Because that did not come up in our meeting this week. So I, if you could reach out to Brian and let him know.
Of course.
About that meeting, and then he can reach out to the other entities as well.
Absolutely, I'll listen to it.
The only concern I have, and I don't know, came up in the meeting, I didn't make it. I know you're looking at single men, single women. Just in case, though, where is that family?
We use White Flag for our families. We are certain that we can separate families from single adults. We did it very successfully last winter because we ended up having to do that at Glenwood Church. So we, we learned how to do that last, last winter, and we are very confident we will, we will be able to do it again this winter. As you know, sheltering for children, there are so many more parameters that go around that. You can't use the winter sheltering, emergency sheltering parameters. And so the only thing realistically we can offer for families with children is going to be White Flag.
So they're not even welcome into the warming center space?
That's White Flag and Warming Center, those are the same thing.
Same thing, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but I am still concerned about that because there are some that are in their cars and.
We know, and we, we try to seek those, those people out. I know if our police officers see anybody out in the cold, they, they will transport them to White Flag immediately, including families with children. So we had some of that last winter. I do think initially there was a little bit of concern, families coming into White Flag. They felt like, is DSS gonna get involved?
Right.
That is not what we are there for at all. This is Office of Community Safety employees. They are there to warm people up, make sure they have something to eat, and make sure that, you know, the next day when it warms up, that they can go about and do what they need to do.
But do you still make sure they're connected through case management?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I understand the piece about the children, but they need to know what resources are available, so.
Thanks. Yes, Mrs. Sirm, sorry.
That's okay. Earlier today, I attended a training session for the Minimum Housing Commission Board, and we had a really good discussion. And Laura, thank you for your help and support with the last discussion and trying to schedule this one today. I know that they very much would like to have a discussion session with council coming up, and I just wanted to mention that to the city manager to see if we could get something on the calendar for after the new council is seated. Because we talked today that they really needed to have those discussions with the new council for anything going forward. They shared some of their concerns and thoughts with me. Very valid, good discussion, but I think that's something that we as a group really need to move forward with, together with that commission. Unfortunately, there has been a disconnect there for quite some time. And I was really surprised to hear that they frequently don't meet because they don't have any cases to review. We certainly have plenty of substandard housing because we hear about it all the time. So we need to figure out where's the disconnect there between substandard housing and actually getting it to the point where their, the Minimum Housing Commission is, is taking a look at it. There appears to be, something has fallen apart or fallen off the tracks. We need to figure out what that is and get that back on, on track. I know when I sat on there, gosh, we had 25 to 30 cases every single month.
Yeah.
And I understand they're not bringing back some of the continuances that we used to have month after month after month. But in, sometimes I think it's good for, to bring back those continuances because if nothing's happening, they're not making any improvement, then we need to do something more rather than just continuing as is. Also, last night, I went to a really good program at Elon Law School. It was all about the Fourth Amendment and rights that citizens have versus immigrants have in our community. I found it very educational, and I'm wondering if maybe we could reach out to Elon Law or perhaps our legal department could, could help provide some limited education for us as a council on that too. I found, I learned a lot, and I think all of us on council could benefit from, from hearing some of those, what does and doesn't apply if you're an immigrant just because of the situation right now. My last item is to congratulate, congra, congratulate all the candidates that have been running and working so hard to get through last night's primary, and congratulations to those that are moving on. To remind people, there's an election on November 4th. Early voting starts October 16th, and we really need more than 10% of the city to come out for, for these elections. And for those folks that are watching, for those folks that are watching that can tell their friends and neighbors, and I, I don't mean to sound sarcastic when I say this, nor do I mean to sound rude, but I know that there are more than 10% of the citizens that aren't happy with everything that's going on in our city. And this is a way for those folks to have a say. And I think it's important that the community comes out to vote. So I encourage folks to vote and look forward to seeing something more than 10% coming out to vote on November, by November 4th.
And to follow up with that, there have been numerous forums, and I've heard those who are running saying that there are so many forums. So we, yeah, so you need to get out and learn, hear what these folks are saying that are running, so you know who to vote for. And that's very important. All politics is local, and I know a lot of citizens wait for the, the election of the president and the vice president of the United States, but the people that sit up here are the ones that affect their life directly. So you need to, to study the candidates and vote for the best ones. I want, I understand that the forum that concerned citizens last Thursday night went well, so, but thank you for coming up to Northeast Greensboro. There's a first annual Community Day event that's coming, Appeal Recreation Center on October the 18th, which is next Saturday from 12 to 5 p.m. So come out for the day to show our community the beauty of its, of its free haircuts, free hairstyles, hygiene care packages, free food, job resources, housing resources. So there'll be a lot of things that will be going on at Appeal Center next Saturday from 12 until 5:00. So we invite you to come.
Well, and after they go there, they can go to the Coliseum and see the puck drop because that will be opening night for the gargoyles, and it'll be the first time in 20 years that we're gonna have hockey back at the Coliseum.
Big day.
Yep. Mary Kay?
Thank you. Thank you. Wanted to mention the Commission on the Status of Women had the purple tree lighting, so if you drive by at night, that is to raise awareness of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the purple is the color. So you will see the parking deck lit up in purple and the trees are lit up in purple as well. And they're also lit up in pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month because that is also this month, so I wanted to mention that. Many of us, and the mayor spoke, were at the Fire Department Memorial for those who had passed away in the past year, the firefighters who had passed away in the past year. And it, it's turned out over the years, it's, it's kind of new, but it's turned out over the years to be a really, really nice event. And I know that a lot of staff were there, so appreciate that as well. Several of us were in the Dudley Panther Parade, so that was a lot of fun. And, you know, I, I want to echo what has been mentioned already. Yes, it's, it's an exciting season to hear people who are campaigning and candidates, but, you know, you want to make sure that everyone knows that they do have the right to vote because it is so true. All politics is local, and I think we can all agree up here that a lot of the things we do affects our residents every day. So just want to encourage that for the November election, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hoffman?
There, there's a forum for our citizens tomorrow night, not for candidates. It's at Temple Emmanuel, and our mayor, Yvonne, will be there along with former mayor Keith Holliday and former council member Justin Outling. And it's really, what does city council do and why should I care? So I think that's, it's at 7 o'clock tomorrow night. So for everybody listening, it would be, I, I went to this, they, they had one several years ago at UNCG, and it was, it was, it was very informative and very interesting. So for those of you who are looking for something to do tomorrow night at 7 o'clock.
Thank you. Zach? Hugh?
Just, just very briefly, I want to piggyback or hitchhike with my fellow council members about, excuse me, about McConnell Ridge and the housing opportunities that are being provided and those price points and availability and the down payment assistance programs that they provide that are stackable with the other ones that we provide so that residents can find both attainability and affordability at the same time. Several of us attended the 48th Annual Native American Powwow on September 19th, and as always, it was an outstanding event. And I'll, I'll say that it was the first year that we didn't have council member, former Mayor Pro Tem Yvonne Johnson with us. But it was a great event and it was very well attended. And I joined council member, Mayor Pro Tem Boozerwetter at the purple tree lighting. And as always, with Domestic Violence Month, it's, it's just important we keep that at top of mind. And the Greensboro Fire Department Memorial Service, always, always with firefighters that we've lost in service or even out of service, is always a very special, very telling event when that bell tolls for those officers. And, and then also with, be celebrating with Councilmember Pender, it's the greatest homecoming on earth. Hard for me to say that, but it's, it's the truth. I am not a graduate of North Carolina A&amp;T, but I have been to enough GHOs that I think that I'm an honorary, a self-anointed honorary aggie. There might be some real aggies that have a problem with that, but self-anointed honorary aggie. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Sharon?
Ditto. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a self-anointed aggie as well. Everybody that's sitting in Greensboro from this month to the end of this month. But I want to first say, we had a great event on September 21. We renamed Bimbo Park after Bob McAdoo, who is our native son, who is a five-time MVP and a Hall of Famer who last played with the Los Angeles Lakers. So we had a great event, great turnout, community spirit was just unbelievable, and so really enjoyed that. And he was so honored. Brought him to tears in another arena we were talking, and he appreciated. And it's great to do that. it's great to do that when people are here with you. Um, and so he could see and hear and feel just how much we really appreciated him. And it puts Greensboro on our map. We got, you know, we've got NBA players and we've got football players and, and just so many sports. Mayor Vaughn and I sat, um, and listened to Mr. McAdoo list off several individuals who, um, we just like, wow, they all came out of this community
Yeah.
In the Bimbo area. And it needs, we really need to craft some type of, Greensboro History Museum needs to go and document this. I mean, so their people, Cedric Maxwell, he was there. But I mean, there were other guys who, Corbin, yeah, uh, he was there as well. But they, Bob mentioned so many and you're just sitting around looking like, these guys grew up here with us. Um, so that made our community really just more historic than it already is. Um, so I was glad of that. Um, then secondly, um, I was at McConnell Ridge with, um, my fellow council members, Boozer Wader, Pender, Thurm.
And Hugh.
Um, but even more special to me, it's in District One and it's in East Greensboro. I'm gonna say it. Um, and it's a beautiful community, um, out there. And it's, it's a total of, I believe I wrote it down here, of how many houses it is. Three hundred and forty-three single-family homes and two hundred and seventy-five townhomes. At price points a little bit higher than I think you mentioned. I took pictures of the stuff on the wall, but it was two sixty, two eighty-nine, three twenty. Um, and so that's attainable housing. Um, and so it's gonna really offer young professionals and families somewhere safe to live. There'll be a fire station built out there probably. I'm not sure the exact timeline, but it's right there. There's a fire station that's gonna be built out there as well. Um, so it's really a beautiful area out there. So we're excited that. Cut some ribbon. Well worth cutting ribbon, um, as well. I also, uh, want to say we had a water meeting, Discolor Water Meeting on September thirtieth. Uh, very engaging conversation. Great, couple of great suggestions, solutions came out of the meeting from, um, some of our community members. So Mr. Davis, I hope you're starting to put that together because I think we, it should be a priority. Um, as, so, as you know, so, um, you have a plan to move forward. And I think it was a very comprehensive meeting, um, as well. Somebody calling, I wish they stopped calling. Um, I also want to, oh, and those homes, uh, Mr. Davis, make sure you add them to the road, the ten thousand. All right. Um, I do want to ask you quickly, um, with the road to ten thousand, how are we, um, factoring in the rehabs? How are we promoting that, the rehabs and the renovation piece? Because it, it's not just brand-new homes. Yes, we, we want all of them, but it's also those houses, um, that need renovation. And Ms. Thurm, to your point about minimum housing, which I've been concerned about for a while, they stopped doing that, putting all those cases on because they were given guidance that minimum housing was only supposed to be about either upholding the inspector. And that's why many of these houses that I've brought pictures of are not being addressed because they're not getting to minimum housing. And they've had multiple code violations, but yet I'm having to wait for one to get to minimum housing before they can get it on the demolition list. That house, half of the garage has fell down by now. When are we going to look out for the safety of the community, the neighborhood? That house needs to come down. But I have to, being told, I have to wait for it to get to minimum housing. Got to get it on the minimum housing. Um, that's another ninety days at least. So that was the instruction given to a previous Minimum Housing Commission. And one of my people that I had appointed to District One raised a lot of cane and people didn't like him, but he made a lot of good points. And he pushed the needle to get it done. And when he was pushing the needle, it started pushing back. So we need to really revisit that, um, as well. Because we got to rehab houses, knock them down, get houses built for people to have safe and affordable and attainable places to live. I also would like for you all to do, um, a review again of Random Row. Um, lights seem to be out there and we need to really go back and up and down that corridor at night and identify those lights that are out and where spots are that need lighting. Okay? Because it, it is dark and we, and I know people are concerned about public safety. So if we can go back and start do that, let's do that at night. Because you can't tell lights are out in the middle of the day. So if we could do that, I know maybe that you may, somebody may say, I don't work at night. But we got to start looking at that, um, even code enforcement. We need some different scheduled times to get some of this work done. So if you can look at that, I'd appreciate it. And then finally, I think that's it for me. Other than, other than, don't forget, congratulations to the, um, hardest campaigning people I've seen in a while and, um, that we have a vote coming up. So I encourage everybody to exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
And bring your ID with you when you go to the polls.
Yes. Um, Mr. City Manager?
Really quickly, uh, one, ACM Davis and I are working really hard, uh, to give you replies. So you will have an update on, on the insurance conversation. I thought it was a really great conversation, uh, to Councilwoman Matheny's point. I know this is something we needed in the work session, but I do really appreciate you all and your responses and your feedback. The other portion, you, you got a message earlier from ACM McCray. Uh, thank you all for allowing us to, to push the road to ten K forward. It really has opened up the world as it relates to housing. Uh, we've introduced a number of conversations, built relationships. So tomorrow morning, ACM McCray, uh, and April Albritton will lead, uh, a, uh, a roadshow conversation. It'll be a panel discussion geared toward developers and builders. We're really excited about this opportunity so that we can continue to build out. Councilwoman Hattler, to your point you just made, um, rehab is a big part of that. Like, I, I had my, I had my, my, um, my graph up, uh, to look at the website because we're over twenty-one hundred houses just since March. And I want to say thank you to you all as council for that. But it's not just about a number. It is about growing and building the houses the right way and the rehab is a part of that. Uh, and lastly, uh, we are very excited. Thank you. The mayor introduced Tori Frink, uh, who is our new clerk. She has come in very nicely. Uh, we're really excited about her being here. I'm just trying to figure out when I walk down the hall and say Tori, uh, both of them answer right now. So I gotta figure out some names for them. Uh, but we're really excited about her being on the team. Uh, we're gonna give her a couple of months and then we're gonna tell her, like, these are some things we need. But, uh, no, thank you all, council tonight, and we really appreciate you.
Yes. Um, Madam City Attorney? No? Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.